So it's 10 o'clock on Wednesday, February 27th is the time for our business meeting of the Deschutes County Commissioner. Unfortunately, two of the Commissioners aren't here yet, so we're going to delay it for 15 minutes until at least one of them arrives and hopefully the other one will be here by 10:30 or shortly after. So if everyone can hold on, we'll get to business in a few minutes. Thank you. Good morning again to everybody here in the room for the Wednesday business meeting, the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners and anybody watching online to our meeting. We postponed the start of the meeting. Commissioner DeBonne joined us. Missing in action still is Commissioner Adair, who should join us about 10:45 hopefully as she finally dug out from her driveway in farm country. So anyway, our first, I'll call the meeting to order and our first matter of business is the pledges of allegiance. If you'll please join me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The second order of business this morning is citizen input. I have one request for input, but I think it pertains to a hearing we're going to hold during our action items agenda, so unless there's anyone else, nope. So then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We discussed pulling items three of the minutes, I guess three, four, five, and six, as we have been working on some other things in preparation for legislative tomorrow. So do you have anything else you'd like to pull?
I support pulling the minutes and I do support the other items on the consent agenda. I can comment that I do know personally the two people who are appointing to the Special Transportation Advisory Committee and I do advocate for them to be appointed.
Great.
So with that, I'll move consent agenda, items one and two.
And I'll second that. The only other discussion is we've got a letter here thanking the grand jury for members who had went out, did a visit of our jail facility and had some comments that we've received and so we have a letter thanking them and appreciate you writing that.
Wrote up a great report.
Yeah, thank you. So any further discussion? Okay. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So now we'll move on to our action items and the first matter is a consideration of a letter of support for public health reaccreditation. We've got Hillary Saraceno here and some of the other, and it looks like other staff too. Good.
Shanna Lindsay.
Shanna, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
So for the record, Hillary Saraceno, Deputy Director for Public Health in Deschutes County, and I have with me Shanna Lindsay, who is our staff lead on all things accreditation. And because the Commissioners sometimes ask very difficult questions, I've brought her for support in case you ask me something I cannot answer. So we're here to ask for signature on the letter and I think, for myself anyway, when I sign something, I like to know what I'm signing and how it fits into the whole picture. So I want to start with just putting it into context, starting with our mission. Our mission is to promote and protect the health and safety of our communities, whether we live here or whether we're visiting. And that is the basic foundation of everything that we do. It's population-based. So to begin with, I'm going to talk about the big three in public health, because there are three big things impacting public health. We have some handouts and I'm going to talk about each one because it's helpful to have the context of what this accreditation is. And the other reason I want to talk about the three is because this spring, there's a lot of things that are going to be happening and you're going to hear about them and it gets confusing even sometimes for some of our staff because you talk about public health accreditation, you talk about public health modernization, and then you talk about the triennial review. So what is all this and what's the difference? And it's important to know these are three big things impacting us and how they're different.
Let me get on the microphone, make sure.
Okay, sorry. Oh, is that better?
Well, just, we're recording also.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about is just real quickly in context, the triennial review. It is a state review that's conducted by the Oregon Health Authority and it is a review that happens every three years with the exception of one program. The WIC program is every two years because that's a federal mandate. All of our other programs are on a three-year cycle. And the purpose is, the state comes down for an entire month and they're coming down end of April and this May. They look at all of our policies and procedures, they shadow our staff, they go to every site, they look at how we're storing medications, they make sure that we are following all of the statutory requirements of public health. It's sort of like our report card. And I'm proud to say, Deschutes County always performs very well in those reviews and I'm very proud of that and I'm hoping that this will be no different.
Hillary, so is the triennial review part of the accreditation process or it's a separate thing?
They're separate, but they're connected. And that's why I want to explain the difference. So this is sort of our compliance, our quality assurance and to make sure that we're following the hundreds of statutes that guide the work of public health that we're mandated to do. So the second one is the accreditation, which is the letter that you're signing today. We were one, true to Oregon spirit of liking to be pioneers and lead, lays the trail. Or, Deschutes County was one of the first or the second actually, public health department to be accredited by the accreditation board. It is a national board that sets standards and measures, so it's about best practices and making sure that we are providing high-quality public health services. So the triennial review is about compliance and assurance that we're following the laws and accreditation is about the quality. And it's based on the foundation of continuous improvement and it demonstrates that we're being good stewards of the resources and it actually makes us eligible for some funding that we wouldn't otherwise be eligible for. And it's like no different than a hospital has standards that it has to meet. Public health is establishing those minimum standards for across the state, across the state and across the nation. The third one you're going to hear about is public health modernization. That is also a nationwide model with Oregon having its unique take on that model. And I have to say that it's confusing because when you're around the state talking to your colleagues, there are probably five different models of public health modernization that all look different. And so it's the same thing, but it adds to the confusion. But it is based on the same four programs and capabilities. Public health modernization is about establishing a minimum set of protections and services in public health so that no matter where you live, you have access to those same protections, whether it's in your restaurants, your water, whatever we're talking about. So that's the difference between, among the three. And again, they're interrelated, like for example, we now have a statute, a new statute that says we have to meet public health modernization in Oregon, so our future triennial reviews will be evaluating us on that. And we've been very fortunate to receive public health modernization funding from the last legislature. We were one of a few counties that received those fundings. This legislative session, there's a potential for more funding to enhance and make sure that we are able to meet the minimum qualifications for public health. So today, we're talking about accreditation. You're going to see on your calendars, we are working on public health 101 because we realized we have a new Commissioner and we haven't done probably as thorough a job as we could educating about what are our services, what are they about? So there's a handout of our first one, you'll be getting 101 here pretty soon. But each program, we're going to do a one-pager. This is sort of the brand that we're using and the layout that we're using. This first one is about accreditation, so you have a little more information in your background.
So you're talking about this?
Yes. Yes. And so you will see that not all counties have reached accreditation yet, but we have in Deschutes County. And what we're going through is re-accreditation. And for the past year, we've been working on that. You've seen it in our goals every budget season. We have met so far, we have 100% of them drafted and we are in the process of just reworking them. And we'll be submitting them in April or May. Yes. So we're here today because one of the requirements is to have a signed letter from our local public health authority, which is our Board of County Commissioners.
Wonderful. Great. Thanks. Do you have any questions?
Well, just an observation. So the public health modernization, I guess I didn't understand that it was kind of a federal vision also and you mentioned Oregon's take on it. And I know that it ends up being kind of the political nature of the legislature of, we've got great ideas, we want to have common services for all the citizens and who's going to pay for it. So that's how it ends up, the legislature or a discussion from the General Fund of Deschutes County, different than the report referring to the existing statutes and requirements. And then the accreditation is best practices, like you mentioned. So, because I've just seen, you know, and we had that one day, you know, up in Redmond a couple of years ago. So I spent as much time as I could there that day, but yeah, understanding that modernization in the end is really who has enough resources to do the suite of best practices also.
And the minimum, it's the baseline. It's like we should have at least those protections and that some counties can build on those. And our, quite frankly, our health outcomes are very good in Deschutes County and I think partially it is because we do have a county commissioners that do invest in it. It is for local protections and the money that the state sends is really to supplement what we're doing for our citizens here to make sure that we stay healthy.
Anything else? When you said that, the statute requires this, so is it a federal statute or a state statute that requires modernization?
For modernization, it is an Oregon state statute as of the last legislative session. We did some reorganization to demonstrate that we are moving toward, you can look at our org chart and you can see modernization in it, like having an epidemiologist, emergency preparedness, health equity, those kinds of things are in our org chart now. Because the state wants to see how we are moving towards demonstrating that we are meeting those minimum requirements. And we have an annual review that we will be bringing to you. We just completed it that will show you how in Deschutes County, we are measuring up with the public health modernization.
Okay. And then on your flyer that you created, so these are like high points here, the 100% client satisfaction. Are you saying that 100% of the people that interact with our health department are happy? I mean, that seems really high.
Go ahead.
She's ready on that one.
We have several.
So actually, when I came here, the first for you satisfaction surveys we sent out had 99, 100% satisfaction. So we have gone through a process of completely revamping how we distribute them, when we distribute them during the year, the questions to make it more evidence-based and we continue to have 99, 100% satisfaction on our client satisfaction surveys. So that doesn't mean every single person is satisfied, but every person who comes in and takes a satisfaction survey, which is available to everyone, has indicated 99 to 100% satisfaction.
Even our environmental health services that are regulatory score very high on client satisfaction, which is pretty amazing. That means we're doing a good job in-
So you tell them their kitchen's dirty and they're still happy. So that's, and that's, and then the other ones, the 100%. So these are just kind of high points that you're about our accreditation, that you're saying, this is something you give to the public or, okay. Okay, good.
And that we have individual ones for the program, but we also have one for public health services overall.
Okay. So we've got a letter in our packet here, basically supporting this and you just need our signatures on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So yeah, the last sentence, "We're also looking forward to the opportunity to increase communication and collaboration among staff and with our external partners and stakeholders." You know, I think that is, when things are going well, restaurant inspections, pool inspections, public health, people don't think about it much, but we need to make sure there is an effort that is going on every day to make sure these successes happen.
It's only when things go wrong that people realize how many ways public health touches their lives, every day.
Yeah. All right. You want to make a motion in support of this?
Sure. With that, yeah, I'll move support of a letter for the Health Services, Public Health Division, re-accreditation.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I understand there's, we're going to, we have another matter to discuss about the health department. I don't know if we need, we may need Commissioner Adair to hear this too, but she's not scheduled to be here for a little bit, but we could hear it and, but maybe we'll just get started now and you can communicate with her separately.
Actually, per the instructions I received from Mr. Anderson, this is just a heads-up.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a discussion at the work session this afternoon.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Just the background.
Okay.
I'm happy to repeat this with Commissioner-
You can call her or something after.
So as I mentioned in our last, oh, I'm George Conway, Health Services. As I mentioned in our last meeting about the legislative agenda, there was a forthcoming bill, House Bill 3063, which is being cosponsored by Representatives Greenlick and Helt. And Representative Helt asked for some technical input as they were developing this and then on Monday, her office sent a request for Mayor Department to provide an editorial, providing a scientific background about the need for immunizations for schoolchildren. I've written a draft. I'll come, I have copies here that Whitney has kindly edited and for your consideration whether or not you'll give me leave to submit this, the bulletin. And then this afternoon, I have copies here if you want them now or this afternoon I can bring them with as well. And then there's just a couple of maps that I'll show you that support-
Why don't you go ahead and give us the copies now and you may, you know, so we can read them before the afternoon meeting and we'll at least know a little more about it.
If the ones that are actually edited?
Oh, they're in the-
If he's got us, yeah, I put it on my desk, I guess, but I'll take one now. Oh, yeah. I saw this.
Okay. I can do preparation before this afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw these. So this is your draft edited by Whitney and so any comments we'd bring, would be bring it to the work session this afternoon.
Sure, sure. And I certainly welcome any suggestions about any-
So when Tom told me about this, he said that Sherhild's bill, he summarized it would, is it, does it do away with exemptions for immunizations completely or does it reduce the grounds for them?
No, actually, it's a, it's a de minimis proposal, the way that the legislation's been submitted or dropped.
Okay.
In that it just takes the existing statute, provides very scant additional background and then excises the exemptions that are not medical exemptions from that. So if you, and I'll bring the text of the bill, I couldn't, I didn't-
Yeah, I just wanted to get my head right because I-
So what they, there's, they've italicized the ones that are to be excised and basically there's a series of other exemptions and procedures that are outlined, which is, it's not strictly speaking of religious exemption, it's a, it's just a personal belief exemption and then the documentation required to go with that, seeing a videotape and whatnot. So there basically, 3063 as proposed is the, the existing statute just excising the non-medical exemptions and retaining the medical exemptions and setting forth the requirement that that be with the documentation from a physician.
But aren't the, just from a political standpoint, aren't the, the non-medical exemptions the ones that people grab hold of and say that's why we don't want our son or daughter immunized?
One of the reasons that I'm seeking your advice and consent is because this is a highly politicized issue that is sort of scientifically incongruous, but certainly people have very closely and strongly held beliefs about this. The reason that we're doing this now is in the face of, as California experienced in 2014, they had a large outbreak that was propagated at Disney World. Hundreds of children were sickened and that led to them basically changing the law there. Now that we have over 60 cases in Clark County and four or five, I don't know what the total was today, in Multnomah County and then we, our department had to, had, we had two areas, the local Juniper rec facility and then a jumping, jumping trampoline gym. Were a young fellow that had acquired measles during the Clark County outbreak had exposed quite a few kids, so we had to deploy our chemical disease team and expense a well over $20,000 to follow up all the contacts. Mercifully, we didn't have any secondary cases here, but it's just a reminder, this is why we have vaccines and measles is a vaccine preventable disease. It actually still kills over 100,000 people a year worldwide and used to extract a lot of mortality here. And then there's other diseases like polio, diphtheria, mumps and rubella, which are in the same trivalent vaccine as the measles vaccine, all of which had very dire consequences prior to the vaccine, vaccine era.
Well, maybe you or Whitney can get us a copy of what the new bill says so we can see what's excised.
Sure, sure, sure.
So that'd be good. Okay, great. You have any questions?
Nope. We'll prepare for this afternoon.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. So our next item on the agenda, I believe, is Dan Hopper Facilities, consideration of chair signature, document number 2019-136, notice of intent to award to Deschutes County Fair and Expo Center roof panel replacement project. I see Lee Randall's joining him as well. So good.
Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Dan Hopper, Project Manager.
So today we have the notice of intent to award for panel replacement, for panels that were damaged through snow damage during the heavy snow loads a couple of years ago. We've approached the replacement in the work in a couple of different ways. We've already completed some repairs to portions of the roof that do not need to be replaced and that were repairs only. And then this work is for complete panel replacement in areas predominantly the main entrance to the, to the, to the main event center, the lower roofs where snow collected from the upper roofs fell onto the lower roofs and the damage was predominantly on the lower edges of that entire shed roof system on the lower part. So Dan oversaw the bidding process and the bid results there in your packet and the low bidder was Northwest Quality Roofing based here in Bend.
Great. So this was a matter that came to us actually, I think in the summer 2017 and maybe under a possible emergency order, we hunted at that point. Wasn't it, weren't, it seemed to me we were looking at closer to 500,000 then, so this is significantly better. Is that, am I right about that? Yeah?
Yes, the 500,000 number is correct. This is for the replacement portions only, so some of the additional work, the repair work was in the-
64,000.
$64,000 range on top of the replacement. Then we also have some interior drywall repairs that we'll complete in conjunction with the complete roof replacement. So there's some additional costs coming. This is a portion of that $500,000 insurance estimate.
And where is Arum Amerex Roofing and Sheet Mill? Are they from Portland or?
They're out of Vancouver.
Vancouver. Were they one of the ones that we looked at originally?
No, it was a public advertisement. Hello? It was a public advertisement for bid and he actually flew down for the bid walkthrough and then decided he wanted to bid.
Okay. Good. Well, again, I think we delayed it, but we may have saved a little money because the 2017, there was a lot of roof repair going on, probably so roofing companies maybe aren't quite as busy. I don't know, we'll see. But, okay, any questions, Commissioner?
Another snow event happening now, so we'll see if we add to the work.
Right, yeah.
But yeah, and I understand those interior improvements have been standing by for this project and, you know, this is the big portion of it, getting the big panels replaced.
Yeah, good. So welcome, Commissioner Adair.
Thank you. It's been exciting.
We're on the issue of the fair, fair roof replacement.
Number eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they just presented what the winning bid was from Northwest Quality Roofing for 304,000, so.
Five stars on Yelp, I believe, is what I looked at.
Oh, good.
Yeah. I just, yes.
Good, good. Okay.
Well, with that, I'll move Chair's signature of document number 2019-136, the notice of intent to award roof panel replacement project.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Adair, any questions?
Um, no. I did look at it. I was surprised the one bid was almost double, but there was another bid, not too much more. So it made sense.
Okay, well, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Well, and Lee, thank you very much for sticking with all the facility activity going on right now and this may just be the beginning of it, is the weather, the thaws and everything, so.
Our staff is working really hard right now.
Yeah. Wanted to send a thank you out to everybody.
So yeah, good, good question. So two years ago, we started clearing roofs. I can't remember why we decided, when we decided, but I remember it happening. So what level of snow or when do we start having to clear roofs this year?
So we're, City of Bend is a, per code is a 25 pound per square foot area. I spoke with our consulting structural engineer earlier this morning. They're estimating right now that across the city, we're at around 15 pounds per square foot. And so at this point, we're under the code design loads and most of our buildings, we benefit from, we're constantly losing heat and losing weight due to the water draining off throughout the day. So once the snow stops accumulating, we naturally begin to lose that weight load. So at this point, we're doing building reviews, checking drains, making sure that water's floating, flowing and, and we don't have any structural concerns at this point and we'll continue to monitor that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I can attest, it's very light snow. But it's very deep.
Okay.
Talk to me about it.
Um, yeah, we're ready to do our other action item. We've got a couple of letters we want to sign with, since we don't have a big crowd here. Ms. Lewis, do you have a care if we take care of a couple of matters quickly before we get on to this matter? I think we, we might want to get this to Chris Doty. So we'll take a break with this. We're looking at letters regarding some legislation tomorrow, it's going to be heard in hearing tomorrow. Been requested to have a signature on that. I think we can talk about the other one afterwards.
So yeah, I've read that letter and I do support it.
And I do as well.
What's the bill number?
It's 365. So it's going to be a Commissioner, a board-signed letter, support of some points regarding our opposition to Senate Bill 365 pertaining to SDCs on being allowed on marijuana grow operations, so.
Yep. So opposition to the bill that is trying to remove the system development charge fee that we've associated with the land use decision of marijuana production facility. So I support the letter in opposition and I'll make a motion that we sign it.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
No. Third.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. All right. One other item to take up with regard to the same bill, but maybe we can do that after the hearing. Nick's going to, or should we do it now? I'm going to pass that down to Sharon. Nick, do you want to just, should we address, this would take a little longer because we haven't really gone through it. I, we've got another action item in front of it. I think we'd still have time to do the action item and then do this still. Is that all right? Okay. So we'll move on to a public hearing on the East Side Bend, planned amendment and zone change. And Nicole Mardell will lead us in that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You do have, I believe, the hearing script in front of you. For the record, Nicole Mardell, Associate Planner, Deschutes County Community Development.
Okay. I'll start. Okay, this is the time and place set for a hearing on 247-18-000485-P-A/486-ZC.
For the record, Nicole Mardell, Associate Planner to Schuets County Community Development.
Okay. I'll start. Okay, this is the time and place set for a hearing on 247-18-000485-P-A/486-ZC. Staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a request for a plan amendment and zone change. The main address associated with the property is 21588 Highway 20 in Bend. The applicant, East Side Bend LLC, is requesting approval of a comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate the subject property from agriculture to rural residential exception area and a zoning map amendment to rezone the property from exclusive farm use EFU to multiple use agricultural MUA 10. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of the hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate toward a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will provide a brief report. The applicant will present its testimony and evidence. Opponents and proponents will then present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony and evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. And if requested by the hearing's body, staff will provide closing comments. A full written version of the hearing procedures is available at the table at the side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of the same and whether you can proceed.
I have none.
I have none. We did have a work session on this. We were introduced to the topic, but had no connections and nothing to declare.
And the same, at the work session, we have been provided the materials describing it, but have had no further contact with the applicants or their representation, so. Does any party wish to challenge a commissioner based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Seeing none, I'll open the hearing and staff, you can proceed with your staff report.
Thank you. So as stated previously, the topic before the Board of County Commissioners this morning is a request for a plan amendment and zone change as submitted by East Side Bend LLC and as represented by their agent, Tia Lewis. To give you a bit of context, the subject property is about 59.24 acres in size. It consists of three tax lots. Tax Lot 1400 is located to the north. Tax Lots 1600 and 1601 are to the south. The property is divided by State Highway 20 in the center portion of the map here. To the south of the subject property is Bear Creek Road and to the west is the City of Bend city limits. And immediately west of the southern portion of the property is the City of Bend's Affordable Housing Pilot Project site that was recently selected. To the east of the subject property is Grace Community Church and Christian Life Center and to the southeast is the Dobbin Acres subdivision. The applicant has two requests before the Board of County Commissioners this morning. The first request is for a plan amendment change to redesignate the property on the comprehensive plan map from agriculture to rural residential exception area. The purpose for this request is that the applicant believes the property was mistakenly identified as agricultural land and would like the redesignation to allow for potentially non-resource development in the future. The second request is for a zone change to rezone the property from exclusive farm use to multiple use agricultural. And again, this is on the basis that the property was mistakenly identified as agricultural land in the initial designation. As the property does include land that's currently designated as agricultural, our code requires two hearings on the matter. So just to give an outline on the process so far, there was a hearings officer hearing and recommendation for the board. Today, we're doing the Board of County Commissioners hearing and potentially deliberations and a decision and ordinance will follow. The hearings officer hearing was held on December 4th, 2018. There were two public comments submitted prior to that hearing. Both of those comments expressed concerns related to the potential of marijuana production on the property in the future and also concerns related to traffic impacts from development on the subject property.
Just on that, so my understanding is there could be marijuana, the way it's production on, the way it's now zoned, but there couldn't be once it's rezoned, I mean, under the MUA and the rural residential, so, yeah.
Correct. Under the current marijuana regulations that were recently passed, marijuana production would not be allowed in the MUA 10 zone of which the applicant is requesting to be rezoned.
Okay.
No oral testimony was provided in support or opposition of the application. There were two individuals who asked questions of the applicant, mostly related to future development plans. Following the hearing, the hearings officer recommended approval of the applications pending DLCD certification of the soil study for Tax Lot 1400. Just to provide a bit of background, initially, the applicant provided a soil study for only Tax Lots 1600 and 1601. Staff then requested a soil study for Tax Lot 1400 so the entire property could be studied for the soil type and classification. But before the hearing, the applicant did not have a chance to receive that DLCD certification. They were able to provide it following the hearing. Staff received DLCD certification via email on January 23rd, 2019. There was also an additional public comment received by Porter Kelly Burns, a neighboring property owner, expressing general support of the application. In regard to next steps, the board has three options to move forward. You could choose to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing, and leave the written record open to a date and time certain, or close the oral and written record. And with that, I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dare, any questions?
No, I've read it. It seemed to be that their soils were all, what, seven and eights up there? Six, seven, anyway, they were high. So, you know, it seems like it definitely wasn't agriculture and it didn't cost out to graze it. So, you know, it seems to make sense what they're doing.
Any questions?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions at this time. So we'll move on and, I guess on behalf of the applicant, we have Tia Lewis.
Thank you. For the record, Tia Lewis, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, East Side Bend. Just to give you a little bit of background, we agree with all the information in the staff report and the hearings officer did a really thorough decision. So I'll just fill you in on a little bit of the details of the application process and the reason for the request. East Side Bend LLC is owned by former Congressman Gary Miller from the Northern District of California. He owns quite a bit of property in and around the City of Bend. Recently, his most recent development was the Stone Creek. It's a master planned community in the former, it's the former Trap Club property out east of town and it houses the Silver Rail Elementary School. We planned that project and he does master planned communities. The purpose for this request is to eventually urbanize this property, so we're trying to get it into a zoning category that will allow the city to bring it into the UGB and annex it upon the next round of that. And ODOT has talked to us about the right-of-way dedication at Highway 20 in Hamby because there's a pretty bad traffic situation at that intersection. And so we're in talks with that to occur with urbanization. So, and it is adjacent to the city's pilot program property and the property owner that rode in in support of that, our application, is developing that property under the pilot program. And while it's in EFU zoning, they have 100-foot setbacks from our lot lines, which is inhibiting the development of that pilot project. So this will help those setbacks as well.
I think they're in MUA.
They are in MUA, but we're EFU.
Oh, yeah.
Or actually, yeah, and then the pilot program...
If they're zoned, theirs is the same way.
You did.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as long as ours stays EFU, they have 100-foot setbacks from our property lines. Yeah. So, and when it comes in under the pilot program, you know, it'll take it out of that MUA and be developed with affordable housing project. So we're using this non-resource designation process. This is the same process that has been used by, again, the adjacent property when it got zoned for MUA 10. It was also used by the Division of State Lands, a little bit further south for their 300, I think it was 380 acres. And a number of other properties within the county have used this non-resource designation process as a means to establish that the property does not contain agricultural soils. And soil studies are the best way to do that. The reason we only submitted a soil study on 40 of the 60 acres is because the other 20 acres were already mapped by the NCRS as Class 7 and 8 soils, which aren't agricultural soils in Schuets County. So we studied the ones that were mapped at a, they were mapped at a six. And so then staff came back to us and said, we really think the best evidence to establish the seven soils on the 20 acres is not the NCRS map, but an individual soil study. So we went ahead and did that one and that's why it was a little bit later than the first one and it took a little bit longer to get it through the application process. But, and you're correct, changing it from the EFU zoning to the MUA 10 zoning will eliminate it from the category of properties that are eligible for cannabis or marijuana production. This property owner doesn't have any intention of using it for that purpose and again, is planning to hold it for eventual urbanization. We may do a cluster subdivision development along the Bear Creek frontage. As you notice, it has significant amount of Highway 20 frontage and that property is more than likely going to be commercialized at some point, together with the development with the roundabout. But the property down along Bear Creek is more suitable and it's also adjacent to the Affordable Housing Pilot Program. So we may, depending on how long it takes for urbanization, we may eventually do come forward to the county with a cluster subdivision application. It could accommodate up to 11 two-acre lots under the MUA 10 zoning. The applicant doesn't have any plans to do that right now and in fact, has told me that he doesn't want to do it, but I'm trying to talk him into it a little bit because we could do a shadow plaid on it and get some, it could at least pay for the property and then he wouldn't have any holding costs while he's waiting for it to urbanize. But I haven't gotten there yet with them and I don't know that I will. But in any event, that's just a little bit of background. We didn't have any opposition to this, as you can see, and the people who did come to the hearing before the hearings officer, they were concerned that it could be used for marijuana production, so they were actually grateful that we were changing it from EFU to MUA 10. So that's really all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I would really ask you today to close the hearing and deliberate and make a decision so that we don't have to keep running up the bill on this one because it just really doesn't, it never was agricultural land to begin with. Thank you.
Commissioner Dare, any questions?
Um, no. I, well, no, you said it was Gary Miller?
Uh-huh, correct.
I thought he, I thought he was maybe from Riverside, California. He wasn't from Southern California? You say he's from Northern?
Oh, maybe it was, maybe it is Riverside.
Yeah, I thought he was a congressman from there.
Yeah, maybe it's Southern. Sorry, excuse me, I misspoke.
Yeah, I was just, I was like going, mm, anyway.
Yeah.
No, um, no, you know, the change they're making seems to make sense.
Commissioner DeBonne?
No questions?
So I have a couple, I think it's kind of interesting when, apparently there's no opposition to this, when we, the property directly west of this property came in, it was, they were proposing a cluster development. It was like a worked-out settlement with 10,000 friends. So for some reason, they got interested in the parcel next to this, but not in yours, which is interesting.
I think that the reason for that is the change, the circumstances have sort of changed. It's been a couple of years since that one came through and because the city brought that in under the pilot program, the reason why they settled it was because they didn't want it developed with 10-acre lots. They, the settlement was, this should be urbanized property and if you're going to develop it under the county code, we don't want 10-acre lots because it's hard to redevelop those. So the settlement for agreeing to do it as a cluster satisfied 1,000 friends that would eventually be able to be redeveloped in an urban, yeah.
Which is what we thought. I mean, that's what made sense, you know, in terms of housing and housing needs. What, this is not really specific, but it comes up and I'm looking at these maps where we're surrounded, there's other EFU parcels, you know, south of the Porter Burns property, east of the property you're doing, west of the property you're doing, north. And so this whole area is kind of similar. What's the cost to do a soils analysis, if you know? I mean, just roughly?
It's expensive.
10,000 for 20 acres or 5,000 or...
So, and it's getting more expensive as we go because there's not very many people doing it. The first one that we did on the 40 acres was done by Roger Boreen and unfortunately, Mr. Boreen has passed away and he was the most reasonable soil scientist around. And so I think he charged us 10 for that one and no one comes anywhere near that. What I'm, what we're paying now, and we're having to do them not only for these zone changes, but when we're coming in for non-farm dwellings on EFU properties, we're having to study an area that can fit the dwelling, the drain field and all of the, and sometimes those studies, even for, we're talking like a half acre to an acre to, those studies are costing upwards in 15,000, 15 to 20,000 dollars. So the study, and it's a sort of a different kind of study, but the study for this 20 acres, I believe that one was 20,000. Yeah.
It just strikes me that, I mean, I would guess, because I'm real familiar with the DSL lands that are further south and this whole area, that, you know, if we're going to piecemeal, do all these soil classifications and it's like, you know, and do this long procedure to change the, but there's, seems like there's a lot of evidence that a variety of this really isn't farmable and has never been farmed and so there's, you know...
Well, and the...
Because as you drive out that way, you know, you're looking at bare fields, but you know there's bare stuff south and north of there that's, or bare scrub brush, basically, and...
And that's, you know, the NRCS maps do contain information that will establish the soils without the onsite soil studies that can be used and that DLCD will accept as evidence that these are non-agricultural soils. It's just that when you bump into opposition or something like that, the best evidence is the onsite soil study, yeah.
Okay. I don't think, I thought the, I agree with you that the hearings officer analysis was real thorough. I don't really have any other questions either. Okay. So we haven't had one of these where we don't really have any opposition or, so the suggestions have been made is we could deliberate, we could close the hearing and deliberate now or we could extend the hearing. What's the will of the board?
Well, yeah, closing the hearing at this point. I do support that and then it's taken two steps, yeah.
Okay. So that'd be the first step would be to close the hearing at this point or...
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
I don't know if that's a vote, that's just acknowledging that no other testimony is...
Okay, okay. So we'll close the hearing and then the next question is whether we want to extend the record for any length of time, for any comments. The only reason that there might have not been somebody here would be because of the weather. We did change the starting time a little bit, but, I don't know, any thoughts on that?
So the hearings officer process was very much a notification, very public process and, yeah, I have not had any other input on this topic and this is the public hearing. So my conclusion, and we know that when people are affected, they will be here. So, I mean, my, you know, my conclusion would be that to support deliberations today, I guess is what I'm getting...
So to close, not extend the written record either? And are you in favor of that also, Commissioner Dare? Do you want to extend the written record?
Well, it did seem to, it has gone on for quite a while and you would have thought that if there was a problem, we would have heard about it by now. So, yeah, I mean, we have notice requirements from 2017 in the documentation. So I could concur with what Tony said.
So would you go ahead and not extend the written record? Would you close that period as well now? Dave, is there any reason for weather-related things? We need to keep anything open or run a...
No, this was a duly noticed public hearing. The record and the application's been available for quite some time and this is the second public hearing. There's no mandatory requirement to hold the record open anyway, even if there was a request. So you could simply close the record. You've already closed the hearing and you could deliberate. I think Nicole's already provided you with a draft ordinance as well, so...
Okay.
It's really your choice.
Okay. So hearing that, I'd also support closing the written, or not, you know, leaving open the record, written record, so we'd close that today and then that would be, we could commence deliberations. Unless there's something else you want to review between now and deliberations?
Uh, no.
So, are you in favor of deliberating today?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so we'll deliberate.
So, observation, you know, the UGB of Bend, the... So, observation, uh, you know, the UGB of Bend, uh, the, um, the, uh, housing opportunity that the state has given, the, the lands, uh, to the east side of Bend there, this is the next step out, knowing that Bear Creek, uh, there's discussion with, uh, you know, future, uh, transportation improvements that need, because we do hear about that. So, the, the cross-traffic at Highway 20, uh, working its way out of town is going to be a topic. So, uh, at this point, I do support, uh, you know, ordinance concluding this process.
Okay. Commissioner Dyer?
I have no further comments on it.
Um, so, my only comments, I guess, are, you know, I support, um, this, these changes today in our comprehensive plan and in the zoning. I am a little concerned, I, as I drive out there, I don't want us just to sprawl down Highway 20. I, I wonder about these other areas that are still EFU, that are probably very similar, and what's, you know, I wish we could do a more systematic, uh, plan to, to look at these areas, rather than having to put the cost on each landowner to, to one by one, bring it up and try to change it, because it's all kind of preparing for further urbanization. So, that's, that's my public comment about it. I know there's other, not everybody maybe wants to change their land EF, for EFU to MUA 10, but, um, just, I don't, we hear a lot about sprawl versus density, and I, I'm in favor of, of expanding the boundaries, but I'd like to do it kind of in block, you know, not just right down Highway 20, so, but this is a start. It isn't say we won't do the others, it just is a good start, so.
Also, uh, yeah, the Ward-Hamby at Highway 20, and Bear Creek's the wrong road I was referring to. But, yeah, just future traffic improvements, because our road department and the state will be involved with that.
And just for the record, what, I'd prefer that there wasn't clustered housing, and the whole thing was actually urbanized, if that, just in the long term, because it, the most inefficient lots, in my view of the world, is two, two-acre lots for housing. So, a lot of people like them, but, um, they're hard to maintain, and you almost need a tractor to work them, so.
A big tractor.
Yeah.
I actually love two-acre lots, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking from a housing perspective, but, anyway. Okay, well, um, any further discussion? So, let's, is there a motion to, let's see, so do we just approve the ordinance then, or would we?
Yeah, there could be a motion to approve ordinance 2019-006.
Okay.
First reading of it today, and then you could come back with a second reading in two weeks.
So, we do the motion first, and then the reading?
Yes.
Okay. So, do there be a?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2019-00, uh, 006, but, uh, by title only at this time.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
And chair votes? Yes. And so, now I do the, do I have to have a motion for first reading, or just, okay?
Do the first reading, and then that's it. It'll come back, uh, the motion for adoption will be in two weeks.
Okay. So, we'll do the first reading of ordinance number 2019-006, an ordinance amending to Schuets County Code Title 23, the Schuets County Comprehensive Plan, to change the comprehensive plan map designation for certain property from agriculture to rural residential exception area, and amending to Schuets County Code Title 18, the Schuets County zoning map, to change the zoning designation for certain property from exclusive farm use to multiple use agriculture. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank, thank you for coming today, and that concludes, I think, our action items. We have another item, which is the discussion with Mr. Leelak about, um, prepare, preparations for Senate Bill 365 tomorrow. He's, so we thought we'd talk about it now, because I, we're supposed to turn this into the Senate, um, Business and Government Committee by noon if we can, so, Nick, do you want to join us? I think we've got two handouts, if that's right. Summary sheet and a kind of a PowerPoint, um, you know, and Nick and I, Nick showed me this this morning, and we made a few changes, and, and, so if you hadn't had a chance to look at this, um-
Oh, this one?
Yeah, this is what we're, and then the sheet that came with it. We're going to talk about, um, and so, a couple of updates, uh, if you haven't seen the emails, I think Chris Doty felt like this would be the second item, like we thought yesterday, on the agenda tomorrow. We haven't verified much about the background with regard to the, um, bill's suggestion, you know, inclusion of elimination of time, place, and manner. I haven't, I don't think we've seen a copy of the bill as, or these changes as proposed, have we, Nick?
Uh, I, I have not seen it, so I'm not sure if this is going to be a proposed amendment to Senate Bill 365, or to one of the other five or six marijuana bills they have before the committee tomorrow morning. Or, it could be a standalone bill.
So, that's something we were going to try to, um, contact Rob Ovede, or, you know, see counsel to see about that. So, you want to kind of lean us, uh, through the presentation you've created, and you guys can give any input, we can all give input on whether, how you like that.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I prepared this as a PowerPoint format for testimony, rather than a kind of a standard letter, just for readability and the graphics and, uh, high-level points of discussion. So, it's not going to necessarily be on the screens in the committee, which would just serve as, as a, as a handout, rather than just a typical letter. So, I, on the front, on the front slide, it, it, uh, the proposed language is, "The Schuets County opposes any legislative measure to eliminate or restrict time, place, manner, regulations, and/or the right to farm carve-out for marijuana approved by the legislature in 2016," and then in parentheses, "Senate Bill 1598." So, the intent is that whatever avenue the legislature might choose to consider an amendment or a bill, this would be all encompassing.
That's a good statement. It encompasses pretty much the, that's the, the statement.
Okay.
Position.
Okay. Slide two really covers the essence of the reasons for the opposition that Chair Henderson and I have discussed, and, and this is really what we want to make sure that we have correct, that we're submitting, um, and to make sure that the commissioners are, are agreeable to these. The first, "The Schuets County would have opted out without the right to farm carve-out for marijuana approved by the legislature in 2016," and that was the Senate Bill 1598.
I might add one point there, I, maybe it's semantics, but to be correct, I think it was, "The Schuets County would have maintained and continued the opt-out."
Hmm.
That was repealed, so the actual opt-out occurred and was in place.
Yep, good point.
It took an ordinance repealing it, and that would not have occurred clearly, and Commissioner DeBonne was here at the time, but that's certainly my recollection from both-
Yeah.
You know, Commissioner-
Yep.
Beany and Commissioner Unger, that was but for the Senate Bill, uh, provision that specifically carved out the right-to-farm conflict, that, that that would not have been rescinded, and the opt-out would have remained in place.
Yep, remained in place is the concept there. That's a good point.
And, and my recollection is Commissioner Unger lobbied very forcefully in person over there in Salem, and he made that clear to Assemblyman Przansky, all the people that were the big hitters at that time on that marijuana stuff, that he made it crystal clear that but for that, that carve-out, that, that there wasn't going to be any repeal of the opt-out. I don't know if you want to clarify that, if it's important?
Oh, absolutely, that's why we're doing this. So, what about adding a second sentence there that says that? You know, prior county commissioner, Alan Unger, you know, lobbied-
But also fixing the first sentence, who would have opted out, because we, we did opt-out, and then we were able to-
Yeah, saying that would-
If I were to do that process.
Have maintained the opt-out without, yeah. That's exactly why we're doing this, is to get the language right.
Clearly, would be continued but for the, the carve-out for time, place, and manner, you know, in terms of conflict with right-to-farm, and so, it does seem like they're doing a 180 on that, if they-
The legislature.
Well, do you like the idea of, you know, County Commissioner Unger lobbied aggressively for this?
I mean, all of them did, but I remember Alan went over there and spent a lot of time walking the halls.
Can I just read the, the first sentence then, to make sure I have it correct? Uh, "The Schuets County would have maintained the opt-out, and the opt-out ordinance would have remained in place but for the right-to-farm carve-out for marijuana approved by the legislature in 2016?" Or is that too wordy?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to leave her, I mean, the, the opt-out would have remained in place, including the prohibitions on any-
Okay.
On any recreational grows, recreational processing, all of that would have been off the table. The only thing that wouldn't have been off the table is medical grows, and so, um-
Well, maybe something that, maybe then, let's do it this way, let's do, "The Schuets County would have maintained the opt-out with the right to, without the right to farm carve-out for marijuana approved by legislature." Then say something about the regulations, and the county commissioners lobbied aggressively for this, or something, carve-out or something, just fill in the blank, okay?
Well, and us aggressively lobbying is different than the legislature supporting it, because that's really the action. The legislature gave us this opportunity.
It was clearly a quid pro quo. I mean, it was, it was crystal clear, the opt-out staying if you don't give us this-
Yeah.
Assurance that we're not going to get trumped with right-to-farm, you know, somehow superseding and-
Well, I'm just acknowledging that, no matter how enthusiastic- You know, commissioners aggressively lobbied for it, and the legislature agreed, or something, or...
They did.
So, why don't you, we could take one more blush at this after we, you know, you can do it one more time and get it back to us, we're, we're around, is anyone going anywhere before our one? Is our next meeting at 1:00 or 1:30?
It's at 1:00.
1:00, so, yeah. Okay, let's go on to, go to the next one.
Next one, the ra, uh, I probably need to put the, uh-
Maybe we should put "The Schuets County ra-"
Yeah, "The Schuets County."
County's regulations.
Yeah, thank you, because this, this was previously at the end of the, of this, and now it's at the beginning, so you're right, thank you very much. Uh, "The Schuets County regulations do not actually prohibit marijuana in, in the Schuets County."
Rural Schuets?
Or in-
Are we just referring to rural at this point?
Rural Schuets County, sure. Um, and, and in this case-
Yeah, I like that, "In rural Schuets County."
Rural Schuets County. And, uh, maybe it's, uh, 49, well, it's 49 approvals versus seven, seven denials, semicolon, 89% approval rate of marijuana production applications in the EFU zone.
Yep.
Continue?
Yep.
Okay. Regulations are not onerous.
Silence is golden.
Yes.
Compliance costs and regulations are reasonable measures to mitigate impacts.
Do we need to put there that, you know, summary of what they are, or?
Sure. As we've often referred to them, the sight, sound, smell, traffic, and, and related, or something like that?
What's everybody think? Should we elaborate on what they are? I mean, if you're a legislator, you're, you don't have no idea what we're actually regulating, so.
Well, sound and smell, maybe lead at those two, because that's always been the-
Yeah, those have been the primary ones.
And then, yeah, definitely mention, uh, traffic and sight.
Okay. Uh, number four is the one that, uh, Chair Henderson and I've continued to kind of tweak and, and try to really nail down, uh, as another one, and I just want to see if I have this correct, is that there's been significant opposition to marijuana applications by rural residents, and we can elaborate on that, or we can, um-
But that's a pretty big blanket statement, you know, because we have example of, uh, application in rural southern Schuets County by where I live, and there was a lot of engagement, but in the end, it was not appealed, and it was generally accepted, and, and it just, you know, once there's a lot of good information out there, it, it, there's different culture in the county, uh, you know, Tumalo, Alfalfa.
Really, and what we're really, we're saying is, when it gets, the ones that have been appealed, where there was significant, that's what we really know.
Yeah, there you go, maybe the-
Now, we did have the other thing in about our legis, did we take out the provision about, that originally, the, you know, 54% of, um-
I did, but I could add that back in right here.
That's a good point, just appeal rural residents.
The word appealed. Yeah. So, significant opposition to, um, appealed marijuana applica, applications by rural residents, uh, maybe comma, who voted against ballot Measure 91, by a vote with 54.6% of the vote, or something like that.
Yeah.
Or something about geographically co-located, I mean, that's not the words, but I mean, because that's what we saw, is, it was very much, is either a Tumalo application, a Tumalo residence, or an Alfalfa application with Alfalfa residence.
Red.
But, my point is, you know, rural residents from, yeah, but, but I don't know that, I saw the, you know, rural residents from all over the county didn't come in to appeal, every one of them, is, is what I'm trying to point out. It was kind of geographic. And, yeah, we, we'll get there.
It's been pretty, I agree with what you're saying, but almost all of the ones that have been appealed, north of Bend have all been almost unanimous opposition. They have people that come in to testify, there's, very seldom does a neighbor come in and testify in favor.
Oh, yeah.
One neighbor in my neighborhood testified in its support. One neighbor.
Yeah, none in some of them.
Yes, so, um-
Well, anyway, what's significant opposition to appealed?
Yeah, appealed applications is fine, because that, that lays it out, okay.
So, okay.
Move on, and, okay. Five, "If TPM regulations are eliminated, conflicts between neighbors will increase. Impacts may be unmitigated and/or opt-out may occur." And that's not-
Well, I don't know, you know, I don't know about whether opt-out will occur or not, I mean, I, um-
Well, is that referring to the Board of Commissioners putting it back to a vote? Do we still have that opportunity if?
Yes.
You do, and, and, and so, we're-
Could be the residents-
If you put it up to a vote, you have the opportunity to enact an opt-out ordinance, and then that goes into effect pending voter, uh, review of that in the next general election.
So, we're in a public meeting right now talking about it, and this would be the first time we might lay that out officially, you know, the recorded, in the minutes of this meeting, if that would be the intention or the will.
And, and the other point I was just making, meaning there, is that citizens could also, by petition.
Absolutely.
So, it may not be the board, but citizens can say, "Holy smokes, now there's no mitigating standards or actions."
In terms of just what's legally possible, without discussing what we tend, is impacts may be unmitigated and, and or opt-out may occur by instigation of the board or citizens' initiative. Isn't that accurate?
Yes.
Is it too accurate?
But is it, what's that?
Is that too accurate? Do we, do we want to say that to them?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, but, yeah, certainly, a, a local initiative could be put on the ballot with the appropriate signatures to qualify it.
4,200 signatures?
Forty-two, forty-three hundred, somewhere in that range, I believe it is, that would qualify to get it on the ballot. Um, I'm not sure if that could be on the ballot through an initiative at a time other than a general election, I'll have to find that out, so, if that were the case, then it wouldn't be till November of 2020.
Right. But does that, but why are we pointing this out to the legislative committee? Why, um, because that's true whether they fiddle with it or not, and whether they eliminate or TPM or not. I mean, so why don't we just say, you know, "If their regulations are eliminated, conflicts will increase, impacts may be unmitigated." Those are true statements. I mean, there's-
Perfect.
And we've had people complaining about the odor control, when there is no odor control, we've had people complain about all the things we're trying to noise, um, so what if we just end it there, without talking about, I mean, because I'm trying to not get the committee off track as to what's really before us today. Does that make sense?
So, uh, in line, I, I might propose putting number six in front of this, before that statement is made then, because, um-
That's fine.
I'm just thinking that it's the rural residential nature of our lands, is why this, the Schuets County is so, you know, different, unique, you know? So then, if we say rural residential property values through mitigating impacts protects them, then we start to discuss if regulations are eliminated.
Well, I think we need to add a point before six then, is, which is, is our, is Well, I think we need to add a point before six then, is, which is our, is the one back here with the map on it, which is, which is what the map talks about. So we do four, well, I mean, we moved six up into five, but between four, the new four and five is one about your point, Nick, that we, you know, Deschutes County has a large number of rural residential and multiple use, and then we go on to show that more vividly, but I think there needs to be that point. And then, because that's the whole point, is we have so much rural living, rural residential, and that's right up against the EFU land, so it's, it's not the cities around by farmland to the border, so to speak.
So a little definition of why.
Definition. So do you have a sentence you can put in there? And then put six as five, and then put five as six, well, not seven. And then, what do you think of this, the last point we came up with? Business problem lies with the state?
That was my note, do we wanna say the business problem lies with the state, or just the county has approved 49 and OLCC's only sent 20? So, yeah, the business problem.
It's not the business problem, it's, it's really the, if there is a, if there is a problem to getting.
The regulatory hurdles are with OLCC, not with getting a lux from the county. It's really the regulatory issues, OLCC.
That's, I guess that's what we're trying to say, isn't it? So could you do it from, from the county's perspective? Because if this is the Business and Government Committee looking at whether government's restricting business or should be, they're looking at that issue from our perspective, the.
Well, is that.
Regulatory, that's, we're kinda trying to point that out, is that, rather than, because the Farm Bureau is trying to say it's all because of us, and when we go through our numbers, we have, there's quite a few that haven't gotten through the OLCC.
So I just, I don't know that I support the statement, I mean, not, I don't know, we should include a statement about pointing at the state, I guess, you know? So the business problem lies with the state. What's that saying? My point is that the next sentence sure tells a lot, just by reading it by itself. It stands alone. The county has approved 49 applications, but less than 20 have received licenses, period. So I would advocate for removing out the first part of.
What if it was something like what Mr. Doyle said, that we've said that if there's a problem with restrictions, it seems to be more focused on OLCC, or would be more at the OLCC state level?
What happened with the moratorium? Did they take, did they get rid of the moratorium?
I'm not sure what OLCCs.
Because they're still saying that we have a glut, so, you know.
One of the bills that is gonna be heard tomorrow is about the giving OLCC the power to basically stop approving them, which is, the Farm Bureau ought to be concerned about that if they were concerned about something.
Well, so this, we're trying to make a case for why, why this time, place, and manner regulation authority matters to us, and now we're making a statement in a statewide OLCC domain. I mean, it just doesn't seem to be the right place to make that statement.
Well, I think, I agree with what you're saying, but I think what our idea was that we've got these people that go to the legislature from our county that are growers, saying that we're their source of all problems, and we're saying, we really don't think we are, and if there's somebody that is, maybe you should look at the state level rather than us.
And I'd like, also, then I advocate that that's implied by making the statement that we've approved 49 and there's only 20 licenses. Just leave it at that. It's already implied. So I'm just saying, that first, first short sentence is kinda sticking in the eye for no reason.
Well, no, I'm not trying to stick him in the eye, I'm just saying, you're focused on us, but maybe you should be focused on OLCC.
Which is what the second sentence says anyways.
Well, it doesn't, but we could say the focus should be on the state. I mean, I don't know if it's implied or not. Do you think, what do you think, Mr. Dare, you're the tiebreaker?
Oh, boy. I would actually, I would maybe flip the sentence, but I would reword the, the business problem lies with the state. Could we say something? Is, does, is there still a moratorium?
Put the facts first.
Yes.
The county is.
Are we still dealing with a moratorium?
Is the problem with the county or the state?
Yeah. I, anyway.
And, you know, the business, so what are we referring to? Overproduction? Because the industry wants the federal government to, you know, take it off of Schedule One, and then there is no business problem because it could be exported. So that's a bigger picture than Deschutes County's land used.
I have an idea.
There you go.
Just gonna ask.
Yeah.
You could say something like, although others have testified that the regulatory issues are with Deschutes County, the county has approved blah, blah, blah.
I like that. Very good.
Blah, blah, blah.
I like it.
You say again, although others have testified.
Right.
That a problem exists.
Problem exists.
County.
Okay. Perfect.
So how many less than the 20 have not received their license?
I think the numbers in the 17 to 18 range that have received their OLCC license.
Okay.
So there's still almost 30 pending.
Okay.
Or they haven't.
So that's where they're really sitting then?
Yeah. That's, that's our understanding, unless, unless people just have chosen not to apply to OLCC, but then it wouldn't be a problem with the regulations, it's the fact that they haven't applied. The point is, it's not, it's.
Did everyone that is in operation, did they get the reports into you by timely? The report due the end of January? The annual report?
Almost all of them did. I'll check with Tanya who's tracking that. There were a couple, there were a couple that didn't, and one or two that she had to call to remind them, and they were bringing them in that day. So I'll, I'll get that, I can get that information as well separately, but I know Tanya's tracking those very closely. Great. Okay. So then, there are a couple of slides highlighting the problem. One of the conflicts, this was the, lack of a better term, this was the poster child of the entire TPM program. I mean, this is one of the keys that we, that we shared with the legislature, and it was, you remember Jim Pesci came into these meetings with his big board and hearing after hearing after hearing.
It was so sad.
And in Salem, so, in fact, we, Peter Gatauski and I took Jim Rue, DLCD's director, and Rob Halliburton, we took them to this property, and both, both parties gave us access and toured us around both, so the state could see. This was exactly the example. So in any event, this, this just summarizes that case study of potential conflicts in rural, or maybe it's not potential, it's actual con, case study of conflicts in rural areas. New home under.
Yeah, that's good.
New home under construction prior to the new medical marijuana greenhouse. The greenhouse is located on a 20-acre property, I recall that, but built to the minimum setback in the zone, it's in about, and we checked, it's about 30 feet from the property line.
Barely.
Just barely. It's just right, it's as close as it can be. Jim talked about the odor impacts were just, and of course, we experienced those as well. New homeowner built accessory structures, which you can see right there, to mitigate the impact, but that didn't work at all. And then the homeowner ended up selling the property for far less than, certainly it was.
He moved out of Deschutes County.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he moved to Creek County.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I thought he moved to downtown Bend.
No, they're, they're, my veterinarian's wife is their realtor.
All right, let's try to finish up the rest of this.
Next one, mixed zoning in small parcels, this gets back to what Chair Henderson was mentioning earlier, to summarize in a bullet point earlier, but this, this is, this is the map that shows it quite well. Extensive rural residential zoning surrounding and intermixed with EFU lands, map highlights the Ben Redmond sisters area. And then it just gives you a snapshot of the number of.
So because the key's so hard to read, what about putting, you know, yellow and red or res, or, you know, tan is EFU, yellow and red are housing, or residential, or something?
Sure, or, yeah.
Just in the, on the left side, because you can't really read the key very well.
Okay.
It's so, and.
Make a custom key for that.
Yeah. Yeah, for at least the tan, the yellow and the red, because that's really the heart of it, that we get so much.
And they can probably, I can ask our GIS staff, they can probably blow this way up so that you can see it much.
That would be a good idea.
Okay. And then the last slide just shows the actual statistics that, whether we keep that or not, certainly your call, but they are also at the bottom of this other page here, it's just that they're really blown up. If they don't make it to the, to the second handout, they can see them very clearly.
Good?
Yep. But this is good, I'll go back and make these tweaks, and then, would you like to discuss it this afternoon? Should I just work with Chair Henderson to finalize it? However.
Yeah, if you wanna try to finalize it before.
Get it over there, that'd be good. Okay. I'm here, so.
This is a perfect picture with Mount Washington. Yeah.
Well, initially, it was 24 hours, and I contacted him and said, we're working on it, we're gonna get together this morning, so we'll try, we'll, I said, late morning, which, maybe that.
Early afternoon.
So we did talk a little bit more about testimony on it, and.
Thank you.
Apparently, we can call in tomorrow as opposed to going there in person. I guess there was another avalanche on Highway 20 or something today.
I'm shocked.
What's that?
No, I'm not shocked.
Oh, the avalanche?
No.
So.
My prayers, I've stopped praying for snow.
Thank you. It's sure working, you sure have a lot of, a lot of impact. Apparently, they're not listening.
Last year, Hutch's bicycle on Third Street had a good sign, it said, pray for dirt.
There you go.
So we're kind of talking to some of the other senators' offices, some of our local ones, to see about the process tomorrow.
So we could do that.
And we could call in, yeah, so.
That'd be excellent, because I saw Senator Lithicam had said we needed to call in.
Yeah, I'd called his office and asked what, and they said that's not unusual to have somebody call in on these. So maybe we could go through this, maybe we could do it in a two-part where there's like an introductory thought about, you know, we've been working this, for this for three years, we've, this is what we've experienced, and then do the presentation. We'll have to see what kind of time they give us. Be interesting to find out how many people they think will testify generally about this. But I do think we, between now and tomorrow, we should know if there's an amendment or a bill, or is it definitely 365 or not?
It's 365 at this point. I contacted Rob here just recently.
Oh, good.
And said, at this point, it's 365, they're just waiting for the amendment to be posted.
Okay.
So I think, I was gonna call him after a meeting, Dave, maybe we could have a call with him and see what he expects to have happen. I mean, this is, and he may be testifying other stuff today, but maybe we could, I don't know if you can text him or email him saying, Rob, is there a time that would be good to talk? Because he's really the one that knows how this will happen tomorrow probably the most of anybody we can ask.
Nick's not gonna try and, you're not gonna try and drive over now, are you?
I'm not, yeah, just given the, given the past. The committee staff member suggested, he said the same thing that Chair Henderson just did, is that, just given the number of people that may be interested in this, they, they would prefer that one person testified to summarize all of the, all of our testimony, and, and then we need to give them the telephone number to call, because apparently what they do is they, the committee staff person will call a number and then kind of have whomever's gonna testify on standby, so when that, when that person's up, and then they suggested, or not suggested, then he said not to use speakerphone, just because it can make all kinds of distorting sounds in the room, so.
Because you'll be watching it possibly on the video.
Yeah, so the question would be, you know, who'd testify? Was it, Chair Henderson, if you, would you wanna testify, or how, how, whatever you see fit?
Well, not to avoid their rules, but maybe we can get special permission, but what I'd really rather do is introduce the topic and then have you go through the PowerPoint, maybe, I don't know. You know, just one, I could say, this is really an important thing to us because we've spent so much time, and, so I could talk as a commissioner about how much of a change this would be, how it kind of upsets the whole apple cart, so to speak, in terms of what we've been doing as diligently as we could for three years. And then you could maybe go through, and there'd be an added benefit of being the, talking about the process. Does that, does that make sense to you? I mean, I'm open, is that?
No, I think that sounds, a good idea.
Give them some confidence that it's concise, you know, we're not gonna ramble, so, you know, let them know it's gonna be five minutes and it's gonna be two people, and then they'll be happy with it.
Yeah, I think they would. I mean, if we were there, they'd let us do that, we'd sit there at the table, they'd probably let three or four of us sit at the table.
Exactly.
When I went for the Redmond one, there was, I think, six or eight people testified in favor of that. I mean, they had their lobbyists testify, George was there, there, John Roberts was there, I mean, they, you know, and then Senator, and the other thing is, is at that hearing, Senator Canop testified, Senator Z, or Representative Zika testified, and so we may be able to get Senator Lithicam to testify, or Senator Canop, I mean, we can work on that, but they would, you know, Lithicam represents that area, Canop represents a lot of the other area, we may be able to get them to testify separate from us about this bill. That's, it was pretty effective.
And Representative Bonham should, and actually Senator Benz, who covers my neighborhood,